Okay, so we need to tell people no more.
We're almost reaching the 5,000 sandbag mark.
Yeah.
And we wanted to say.
That's awesome. Okay, everybody, we're gonna start the meeting here in a moment. Okay. All right, let's get going here. Okay, they're okay. All right, everybody, welcome to Dania Beach City Commission, regular meeting, Monday, October 7th, 2024, just after 7:00 PM. Can I please have a roll call, Aaron?
Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lewillen.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner James.
She's absent.
Yeah, she has an excused absence.
We have to move.
Okay.
Commissioner Salvino.
Here.
City Attorney Bootses.
Here.
City Manager Garcia.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
You can do it now.
Could we have a motion for an excused absence for Commissioner James, who was in an accident today?
Make a motion to approve it.
Okay, I have a motion from Vice Mayor to excuse the absence. I have a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes, thank you. So please take a moment of silence. Thank you, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
With the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, getting down to business, item 3.1 for presentations and special then approvals is the city fiscal year end investment portfolio update, and this is from Public Trust Advisors. We'll hear from our CFO Frank first.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor, good evening, everyone. Frank DiPaolo, Chief Financial Officer. If I could please first, I just want to introduce someone who's new in the finance department. This is Jadeen Notice, she's our controller, she's been with the city since June, she's proven herself to be a great addition to the finance team, she comes to us with a ton of experience in higher education, she was most recently with Palm Beach State College, and she's been doing a great job leading the accounting group, and I'm just happy to introduce her to you tonight. Welcome.
Welcome, Jadeen, welcome.
Okay, so now, Public Trust Advisors is the city's investment advisor, they've been our investment advisor for just over two years, and they've been doing a great job with the city, they developed our portfolio at the perfect time, and John will talk to you a little bit about the interest rate environment and how we're set up now for the next few years based on where we've built it for the last two years, and I believe that part of the reason why we got our AA plus bond rating is because of them working with us, they came in, they gave us some great recommendations on our investment policy that helps strengthen our, the way we do things, and they're just helping us be more fiscally sustainable, which is our goal right now, so I want to introduce John Grady from Public Trust Advisors, thank you.
Thank you, Frank, and thank you for those kind words, we truly appreciate our partnership. Mayor, Commissioners, John Grady, Public Trust Advisors, Ms. Garcia, good to see you all, it's great to be in front of you again, and thank you for a few moments of your time, I want to be respectful of that time, especially with this upcoming hurricane that we have that seems to be quickly approaching us in just a couple of minutes on an economic update. So gross domestic product from the growth of the overall economy, second quarter GDP came out, the final reading was 3%, more than double the first quarter's growth, that was great news and certainly somewhat surprising to many economists, we had 1.4% growth in the first quarter, many economists have been forecasting, by the way, for well over a year of an economic slowdown that just doesn't seem to happen, that's not necessarily a bad thing, and then this last quarter was led by consumer spending, almost 2% of this GDP figure was from us as consumers, we do make up more than three quarters of the overall economy, and the other big component of that, which we can see on this bar on the far right is in gray, and that's the business and investments, and when businesses are investing in the economy, they're doing that with the assumption that we as consumers are going to be spending in the future, so that certainly is a good economic indicator as well, the one drag on the economy during the quarter, which is not uncommon in period, in certain periods, is when we have more imports than exports, so that was a bit, but again, great second quarter growth for us, the one comment I'll make is, I think one of the things that the economists and market participants are concerned about looking into 25 is the amount of debt that we've taken on as consumers, and whether that will hinder future growth just due to the amount of debt that we have. That said, the good news is, from the inflation picture, is that inflation continues its positive trend, and that is favorable, and that it's coming down, it's declining from that over 9% annualized growth we saw back in 2022, down to the most recent reading of annualized inflation price increases of 2.5%, it's actually a 0.4% decline in one month, so that was the biggest drop in several months, and 2.5% annualized CPI was actually the lowest level of price increases since February of 2021, so again, very favorable, favorable GDP growth, favorable from a CPI or inflation perspective, so that's all great news, the one persistent sticky part of inflation you're likely continuing to hear about, and we know, we feel it here in South Florida, is shelter costs, so whether you're buying a home or renting a home, shelter costs continue to make up the majority of CPI, has been that way for several months, and certainly the Fed can't really control that part of inflation, and so that will likely continue to have an impact, but again, the good news is, we continue to see price increases coming down, more recently, the Fed has really shifted their focus from inflation to the labor markets, and not necessarily in a positive way, but a bit of a concern that job growth is not as strong as we've seen it in the last couple of years, and so if we look at that chart on the top right, we can see where there's somewhat of a downward trend, and really in the last few months, prior to this most recent reading, a couple of months of job growth, that was around 100,000, 150,000, where we've seen job growth well over 200,000 for several months, those most recent job growth numbers were causing some concerns to the market, and we'll talk about it in a moment, but likely was a big decision factor for the Fed when they cut that overnight rate from 5.5% to 5%, and then lo and behold, just last week, you likely saw, we received a jobs number of 254,000, which you see on this chart, and that was over about 100,000 more jobs, so 70% more, 70% more jobs that were created than what was estimated for September, and so very good news for the economy, what we saw from that is we've seen market projections be of rate cuts being reduced, meaning rates potentially staying higher for a little bit longer than anticipated, but again, just from the overall economy standpoint, obviously stronger job growth is better for all of us, especially when we tie back growth to the consumer, so that's good news, when we look at the unemployment rate there on the bottom, 4.1%, so actually unemployment came down about a tenth of a percent, there's been some concern in recent months because unemployment came up from 3.7% to 4.1%, but if we look at that historically, 4.1% is actually a very favorable unemployment rate, it's just many things are relative, and we were below 4% for over two years, so once that started to tick up, there were, again, some concern with lower job growth and higher unemployment, that said, the 10-year average for unemployment is 4.75%, so we're still well below that, so I think still favorable, most recent job number certainly should be good for our economy, especially as we head into the holiday season in the next few months. Just quickly on this chart, this is the Fed's forecast of where they expect that overnight rate to be, when we go from left to right, you can see that downward slope, as you know, the Fed cut that overnight rate from 5.5% to 5% at that last meeting, and really just want to illustrate to you that the current projections are that they will need to continue to cut that overnight rate to help to stimulate the economy, this is based on an assumption that the economy will slow down, and the Fed would need to cut that rate, if we look back again over the last 18 to 24 months, the Fed had been, the market had been projecting the Fed to cut rates long before this last meeting, and so we've been able to hold on to these higher overnight rates for a long time, hopefully we'll continue to have a good, decent economy, decent job growth, and then hold on to these rates, and the Fed wouldn't be forced to cut the rates as quickly as what might be projected, but this is just something to show us what's being forecasted by the Fed at these quarters, they meet every six weeks, they update this every quarter, and then just the last couple of minutes, and then we'll jump into your investment strategy, is just to give us an idea of what interest rates have looked like really over the last 12 months, so as we can see from this chart, really a lot of volatility, if we look back at last fall, so right around this time last year, a two-year Treasury was trading at 5.22%, which is over on the left-hand side, five-year Treasuries were close to 5%, then we saw rates come down in the early part of 2024, and then pick back up, and these are all based on, again, future economic growth, different indicators that come out, primarily inflation and job market related information, we saw rates pick back up in the spring, and then we've seen a pretty, pretty constant or consistent rate decline since April, really through the summer months, and then just in the last couple of days, with that job report that came out on Friday, we've actually seen rates on the far right-hand side of this chart bump up between 20 to 30 to 40 basis points, just based on that strong job growth, so a lot of volatility with the curve, that said, this will tie right into your investment program, you have a very diversified investment program, you utilize daily liquidity investments, what we'll call money market fund strategies to provide daily liquidity for your ongoing needs, capital projects, short-term needs, and then you balance that with the core strategies at Public Trust, thank you, that we manage on your behalf, and so I wanted to mention the liquidity component, because those investments have done very well in the last couple of years with rates over 5%, what happens with those, when we go into a declining rate scenario, when the Fed starts to cut rates, is you'll see the rates on those investments come down pretty quickly, they react very quickly, they reset daily in many cases, your longer-term investment portfolio is designed to invest those core investments out between one and five years, and one of the things that it does is it helps protect you in a declining interest rate environment, and then historically, these strategies have provided higher income, so it's not just about income, though, your primary objective is safety of funds, and having a balanced investment program, and that's where working closely with Frank and his team comes, is very important in developing cash flow analysis and making sure you have the correct allocation in liquidity, and then the appropriate amounts in these strategies. You have two different investment portfolios that are similar, they just have two different maturity structures, you have a one to three that has maturities between one and three years, and then you have a one to five-year portfolio that has maturities between one and five years, and tonight, I really was just gonna focus on the aggregate of these two investment portfolios, they're very similarly managed, except for that weighted average maturity I mentioned to you, and so when we look at the overall, and they're balanced, by the way, both are equally invested, and so if we look at the, these two portfolios in aggregate, one having a 1.8-year maturity, the other having a 2.5-year maturity, if we look at the top right-hand side, we can see in the portfolio summary, your average maturity of your core investments is right around two years, and so that's, again, a great balance for you between that and then your daily liquidity investments that you have for overnight, if we go down those rows, and we look at book yield and market yield, the book yield is what illustrates the amount of income that these portfolios will be generating in the future, based on your current holdings, and the market yield is based on what the market's doing at any given time, and so I thought it would be interesting to show you, as we just saw the volatility in the interest rates in the prior slide, if we look at 9/30 of '23, the market yield was just over 5%, the market yield as of 9/30 of this year was 3.73%, so that just illustrates that 100 basis point decline in interest rates in the market, the good news is, because your portfolio is invested, it's not gonna react to those declines as quickly, so you can actually see, your portfolio not only didn't decline, it actually went up a few basis points, now that won't happen if rates decline for the long term, but what this does highlight is that these portfolios will help protect against a decline in income in a very short period of time, so we're continuing to reinvest, and in fact, for these two portfolios, we reinvested anywhere from 3.8% to about 5% over the last 12 months, we reinvested around half of your investment portfolio, what we do with these active managed strategies for your portfolio is, we rebalance it each month to maintain the target duration, we're not selling based on any moves in particular in the market, we're not trying to time the market, it's based on a duration target, based on your cash flow analysis and maintaining that in a disciplined strategy over time, and that, we believe, is very beneficial in these volatile interest rate cycles that we see over time, you're very well diversified, you're primarily invested in US Treasury securities, but then you're also invested in some highly rated corporate notes, and these are bonds, not equities, and those are A-rated or higher, as well as a few municipal holdings, and then the ratings are primarily almost 90% in AA, just over 1% in AAA, a lot of that has to do with the S&amp;P having the government rated at AA, so that's why the majority of your investments are AA, and then around 9.4% in single A, and those are allocated to the corporate notes in your portfolio, and then, of course, I always want to make sure that I confirm with you that your policy, your portfolio, not just this, but your overall investment program, is compliant with your investment policy statement, which is very updated, as well as Florida state statutes that govern the investment of public funds, so I ran through that, not intended to be too quick, but let me just want to pause, and if any questions for the Mayor or Commissioners, or Ms. Garcia.
Any questions? It's a great report.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you Commissioners, we, again, appreciate our partnership with the city, Frank, thanks for bringing us on board, and we'll look forward to seeing you next time.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Grady, I really, I enjoyed the report thoroughly last year.
Thank you.
This year, same thing, I like how you give us an overall picture of the economy first.
Appreciate that.
And then compare us.
Thank you, Mayor, very much. And to all of you and your families, safe, be safe during the storm, thank you.
You too, thank you. He took the bright line down here from Orlando, by the way.
I did.
Said it was a great, great trip.
Taking it back.
All right, all right. Safe travels. Okay, up next, 3.2, this is a request for approval of a proclamation for Red Ribbon, Red Ribbon Week, Red Ribbon Week, in October 23rd to the 31st, 2024, this is sponsored by me. This is sponsored by me. Do I have approval? On our right, we have consensus on that. Item 3.3 is another request for approval for a proclamation on Cybersecurity Awareness Month, and that's October 2024, sponsored by me. Consensus, thank you. And then we have a cer, now, we have a service award and recognition to CIP and grants administrator, our own Colin Donnelly. And this is through the city manager.
If we can have the city team join me, Candido, Fernando particularly.
Hi, Colin.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, city team, and our residents that are here and watching at home. I have bittersweet news, because Colin is going to be retiring from the city and going back home to his native New Jersey. And it was time for him to go back home. But, but I have to say, he has served us so honorably and professionally for the past 16 years. For me, these past five and a half years, when I came to the city, I didn't know anyone. Colin was the acting city manager. So the time that I spent with Colin and Chris was truly remarkable. And Colin really helped me, particularly cleaning up the Public Services Department, and I don't have to tell you, the rest is history. But this is, this is an individual that is not just a true professional, but he is an amazing person and an amazing father, who raises his two daughters by himself. One of those daughters is serving us, you know, in the Israeli army. And I must, must say, today marks the one-year anniversary of the attack in Israel. And there's his daughter in uniform in Israel, and you should be very, very proud of her. His other daughter, his younger daughter, is a student at the University of Florida. So congratulation on the 16 amazing years that you've given us, but congratulation on the father and the dad that you have been, and how well you have served us, and how well you were there for me, for Candido, for Fernando, for Dinsir, and for the rest of the team. We love you, Colin, and we don't want you to ever forget us. His initials are C.D., and I would always tell him, you're the money man, because for the past four years, we have delivered over $40 million in grants. And all those trips to Tallahassee and all that money that we got from the federal government, if it wasn't for the work that he was doing, we wouldn't have been able to make it happen. And, and I know the other day Fernando was very emotional when he was speaking at the groundbreaking, because that team, I don't have to tell you, you see them all the time, that team is like a family, and they've been nonstop all weekend. And we have to tell them, hey, we need you to rest, but it's amazing, and we're going to miss you, Colin, but we value the 16 years, particularly the last five and a half, that all of us have been together, this administration with you. So this is something that we gave you, that we're giving you, and it says, presented to Colin Donnelly in recognition of your exemplary service and your commitment to excellence. And we chose this color because we know what blue represents to you and to your girls and your family, but always rising and always shooting northward. And we wanted to present it to you so you never forget us, as we will never forget you, Colin. And we love you very much.
A few words. You probably don't know, but I could probably talk for an hour. I just want, really, this, this means a lot to me. I really have loved working for Dania Beach. As far as a professional challenge goes, my first interview here, they were taking down the highlight sign off the corner of Dania Beach Boulevard and Federal Highway, and they knocked it down that day. And I was hired as the first Assistant City Manager, because the, the commission wanted to make the city more professional and prepare for growth. And ever since then, I've really worked with very conscientious elected officials who had a different vision of what the city could be. And my time here, I'm just blown away by what's happened with, with the growth and the planning and everything else. And just to touch on the grants, what I had, you know, this, obviously, this is not me, but it comes from a vision from the commission and from an administration, making sure the planning gets done and putting everything in place. So our objectives match the grantor's objectives, and that's all we're doing. It's good planning for future and then, and putting the money into your visions. So I see this thing as a, a top-down leadership that comes down to then everybody taking that direction and making things happen and getting things built. The hardest thing in government is getting something done, and I think you should all be happy, you've got a real lot done, and that's been very fulfilling for me, because I don't know, you know, I'm going back to New Jersey, and there was a lot of frustration about not getting things done up there. And so perhaps I'm a little bit insane to go back and do it again. But again, I want to say thank you to everybody, and I've really worked with really great residents and staff. I've really never really enjoyed my workday as much, working with the people and the residents and the elected officials of Dania Beach. It's really been an honor, and just know I appreciate everything. And who knows, you may see me come back and visit through here. It's a great place to visit, to come back to Dania Beach. So thank you.
Too many of us. Too many of us.
Can we say something?
Yeah. Too many of us.
Thank you. Thank you, Colin. You've always been a professional, always been friendly, you've always worked your butt off for the city. And as you said, it's reflected all throughout the city and all, all the good work that you've done. So thank you very much. I know a couple of the other Commissioners would like to say some words, too. Let me get it fired up. Who's first, Joyce? Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Davis?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and I just want to say a heartfelt thank you to you directly, Colin. I have been going to Tallahassee with the city manager, but it's based on the grants. And yes, we have a vision, and you say it's top-down, but I have taken doctoral-level grant-writing classes, and it is the skills that are able to, that you have, that are very, very, very special. And it's not the average person that can get $40 million in grants for us. But thank you for being who you are. We would not be able to go and do what we do. We cannot shine without the people who do the work and your skill. There are so many cities who don't have a grant writer at all, don't have this kind of person on the team, so you are going to be missed, and I hope we can keep you some kind of way as a consultant or something. But I really want to thank you, because it's your knowledge and your skill set that really mean a lot to us, and, and the fact that we're celebrating this one-year anniversary today. Thank you for all you have done for our city. We greatly appreciate you and will miss you dearly. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Loewen?
Thank you. I actually did speak to Colin just a little while ago. I kept, I wanted to say something to him at the groundbreaking, and I didn't get a chance, because it was just so hot and everybody was trying to get out of there, but I was glad to see him tonight. But he was here when I first came in as mayor and literally walked me through everything and got me familiar with all, everything that I needed to be concerned about and was just such a wonderful help. And he is such a great father and did such a great job with his girls, and he will be missed by, by the people in the city, as well as by the residents, absolutely. So, and thank you for everything you've done. I don't know who's going to fit, fill his shoes, because I've never seen anybody get it, bring in the amount of money that he brings, and that's insane. So thank you for that, too. It's a lot.
Commissioner Salvino?
Thank you. Colin, I'll go back to you in 2014, when I was first elected, and I know that you were special at that time. I just want to thank you for everything you've done for the city. I saw it in the beginning, and I just, I can't believe all the things you've done. I'm glad you stuck around, I'm glad you did what you did for the city, because you sure have been a benefit, and I'm going to miss you, I'll tell you.
True professional right there. Going to miss him. And you always have a home here in Dania. All right, up next is a proclamation. This is by me, and this is for Cybersecurity Awareness Month, October 2024. It's a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, whereas the digital age has brought unprecedented benefits to our society, transforming the way we communicate, work, learn, and play, while also introducing challenges to our security. And whereas the City of Dania Beach recognizes the vital role that cybersecurity plays in the continued prosperity and growth of our community. And whereas maintaining the security of cyberspace is a shared responsibility, for which every individual and organization has a crucial role to play. And whereas the frequency, scale, and sophistication of cyber threats continue to rise, targeting our infrastructure, businesses, schools, and homes. And whereas promoting education awareness about cyber threats and the steps to protect our information and digital assets is of utmost importance. And whereas the Dania Beach IT Department works diligently to provide awareness of cybersecurity and safety to employees through annual trainings and continuous communications on new trends to be aware of. And whereas the United States Department of Homeland Security and the National Cybersecurity Alliance have designated October as National Cybersecurity Awareness Month. Now, therefore, on behalf of the city's commission, I, Archibald John Ryan IV, Mayor of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim October 2024 as Cybersecurity Awareness Month in the City of Dania Beach, and I encourage all citizens, businesses, and institutions to engage in activities that promote a safer and more secure cyber environment. Come, Darrell, you're going to take, you're going to take the proclamation? All right, come receive it first. Picture, no? All right, yeah, say something first, then. Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and the rest of the City of Dania Beach staff for this proclamation and recognition of the Cybersecurity Awareness Month. Excuse me. It's truly an honor to accept this on behalf of the RIT Division and the many individuals and organizations committed to protecting our city's digital infrastructure. In today's world, cybersecurity is more critical than ever, with increasing threats and evolving technologies, safeguarding our networks and data is a shared responsibility. This month serves as a reminder to be vigilant, educate ourselves on best practices, and work together to foster a culture of security. Our city's commitment to cybersecurity not only protects our systems, but also ensures the privacy and safety of every resident and business in Dania Beach. Thank you again for this recognition. Together, we can make Dania Beach a leader in digital safety and resilience. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's do a picture. I didn't just push you out of the way, who's your chair? All right. Okay, up next is our administrative reports, and we'll start with our city manager, Anna Garcia.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor. I will be brief and move very swiftly, as I know that we want to make sure that we get everybody home before the weather gets bad. As you know, there's a massive Category 5 out in the Gulf of Mexico. We've been working around the clock all weekend long in preparation and in mitigation of any, any issues with our storm drainage, with flooding. I just confirmed with our deputy city manager, who's been leading the way, working with our public services team, that we are almost at 5,000 sandbags between the ones that we gave away September 25th and the ones that, that we've been giving away, and actually doing a white-glove service and taking them to people's homes. You know, as I was discussing with Commissioner Davis earlier, there are still cities that just dump a, a big pile of sand, and the residents have to shovel their own sand. You know, we, we made that change back in, in North Miami Beach, and we brought that change here. On, on September 25th, people just drive by, they pop their, their trunk, and we put the sandbags there. This weekend, even though we had given them away, you know, 10 days before, our, our commission, and we were very concerned, and we've been delivering sandbags, and we will finish by early tomorrow morning. And I guarantee you that we have a full-court press leading up to the storm before and after to make sure that our city is in the best predicament it can be. We have our fire team out there, we have our, our chief and our deputy chief of police ensuring that we have the high-water vehicles ready, just in case that we have to make any type of, of rescues. And we will be following suit with Broward County Schools. We will be closed Wednesday and Thursday for the safety of our team, and we will reopen on Friday with special hours from 8:30 to 5:00 on Friday to serve our residents, unless there's any changes. Now, from the last report, I was talking to our HR director, and it looks like the storm has slowed down, so Broward County may have to close also on Friday. So we'll keep you guys updated, and thank you so much, every single one of these elected officials. We're on the phone with me and Candido all weekend long, so we just wanted to give you an update on that. We're hoping for great weather on Saturday, folks, and I know everybody's going to want to come out. We are ready to go with our Parks and Recreation and our Special Events Division, and we are bringing back Oktoberfest this Saturday at 6:00 p.m. So please join us. We have sold over 400 tickets already, so we're very excited, and hopefully, the storm will have minimal effects, and we can move forward Saturday with, with, with Dania After Dark. Our Parks and Rec team had a very productive meeting with the current and past president of our Lions Club, and we have started a dialogue to partner on a very exciting fundraising endeavor to be held on March 25th here in City Hall. It's going to be the Moonlight Classic Car Show, and this could actually be an annual event here at City Hall. The Lions is a great, great service team, a great group of individuals, and the proceeds from this great event that we're going to be marketing soon will be going to a program that they have for, for Vision and for Glasses for, for youth. We're very excited to, to partner with them on their Vision program. The annual ICMA conference held in Pittsburgh, we had over 2,000 delegates from 20 countries, and it was a tremendous opportunity, because there were so many courses. Linda joined me up there, and we really took recruitment to, to new heights, because we want to make sure that we fill every single position. And one of the best courses that, that I attended was having the opportunity to meet the Fire Chief of Baltimore and the manager, the city manager of Baltimore, and when they had the bridge collapse. You know, being able to mobilize like we do and, and do it so successfully does not occur without myself, Candido, our chiefs, and all the department director, really, really being committed to professional education. But getting to meet that city manager and, and finding out their efforts and, and what happened after that bridge collapsed in the middle of the night. But that's what we are ready, you know, for, we prepare for the, for the worst, but we're always ready, and a lot of that would not happen without your support and us being able to go to our professional conferences. I also wanted to let you know that on, on Monday afternoon, September 30th, our deputy city manager and I hosted Principal Giancarlo from Olson and our new school board member. As you know, the, it's been, you know, over a year now that there's been dialogue about closing our schools, and I just want to let you know that we're extremely relentless, myself and, and our team and our city officials, in regards to ensuring that we can provide partnerships and, and options, so both Collins and Olson are not closed. So we'll keep So we'll keep you updated on that. We also wanted to let you know that on Monday evening, September 30th, I attended a Broward County School Workshop, and I attended with the, the Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Llewellyn, Commissioner Davis, and Commissioner Salvino, and we made our voices heard. There was, you know, a couple hundred people there, about 300 people there at South Broward High School. And I just wanted to let you know that you do have voices and strong voices here representing the 800, 900 students that are at Olson and that are also at Collins Elementary. On Tuesday, October 1st, we hosted a meeting with the Executive Director of the Miami-Dade County Homeless Trust and with Victoria Malette O'Brien, who's the Board, who's the Executive Director, and also with Ron Book, who's a Chairman of the Board for the Homeless Trust. There's, there's a homeless challenge here in Broward County. We're not where we used to be, but a lot of it has been because of the proactive efforts here in our, in our city. Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you to our Chief and our Deputy Chief. But we wanted to see what Miami-Dade County has done with the Homeless Trust. Our next step will be to meet with, with the County Manager. But we, we are not leaving any stone unturned with any of the initiatives that, that are a priority to this Commission. And, and lastly, before I close, because I promised former Commissioner Brandy Martin and as well as Commissioner James and the Vice Mayor, last, last Thursday, I was very much surprised. I was invited to go to the seniors' luncheon. There was over 100 seniors there. And the, the, the President of, of the seniors and former Commissioner Cheeky Brandy Martin surprised me with this beautiful award that brought me to tears because we have come a long way. But it's not where you finish with, it's not where you start with people, it's where you finish. So always continue to work on building relationships and rising above. But basically, it says, "Award of Unity Presented to Anna Garcia, October 1st, 2024, Dana Beach." Thank you for being the glue that holds the City of Dana Beach and our seniors together. And I presented this to my mom because my mom always tells me to take the high road and to continue to move forward and build relationships. I was very happy, and I just wanted to share it today. Thank you all so much. And this concludes my report. Thank you.
Well deserved, Manager. Well deserved.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, City Attorney, Bootses?
I don't think I'm ever as heartfelt as the Manager. It's sad. No report tonight. Everyone, please be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Eve. Okay, City Clerk, any reminders?
Yes, we have the next City Commission meeting on October 22nd at 7:00 PM. Following that, on November 18th, we have the organizational meeting at 5:15 PM, the CRA Board meeting at 6:15 PM, and the City Commission meeting following at 7:00 PM. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor?
I, I just wanted to mention, Eve, that I know that there have been some cancellations, and I know that there were several people that were interested in coming to the magistrate hearing on Thursday.
The special magistrate hearing has been canceled and is being rescheduled, I believe, for the 23rd of the month.
Okay, just wanted to make sure it was out there so people knew because I know that I've heard from a number of people that they were planning on coming, so, thank you.
We didn't want people to be going out in the weather should it be here, so it was canceled, and new notices will be issued to the properties and posted on the property.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're in public safety reports, and we'll start with our BSO Police Captain, Jason Tarralla.
Is it on? There we go. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Attorney, City Manager, good evening. So earlier this week, our CST detectives conducted a traffic stop of a vehicle off of Southwest 11th Avenue and Second Terrace on a Toyota Camry. They identified one of the suspects inside the vehicle who had committed numerous felony thefts throughout our city. Once they successfully got the vehicle stopped, they were able to place that suspect in the custody, and they also found a bunch of felony narcotics, nine hydrocodone pills, three oxycodone pills, as well as eight MDA pills on the suspect. The suspect was charged for the multiple felony narcotics as well as the numerous felony theft cases throughout our city. Also this week, one of our deputies who was doing proactive patrol observed a vehicle driving very reckless in the northwest section. The vehicle was driving the wrong way down Northwest 1st Street. It almost hit a bunch of pedestrians that were standing in front of 806 Northwest 1st Street. The deputy stopped and made sure that none of the pedestrians were hit by the vehicle. He then continued down the street and attempting to find the car. Luckily, he was able to find the vehicle on Northwest 6th Avenue. He attempted to conduct a traffic stop of the vehicle. The vehicle stopped, and immediately the driver exited the vehicle and attempted to run away. Our deputy engaged the suspect and was able to successfully get him onto the ground and place him in custody after a very brief struggle. In another instance, very good arrest for our deputies. Our deputies responded to 4701 Southwest 32nd Avenue earlier this week represents a female who was reportedly attacking the caller's husband with a bat and throwing glass bottles outside the house. Upon arrival, deputies already responded to that house earlier in the day and already had charges on this same woman for a previous felony from earlier in the day. Our deputies attempted to make contact with the female at her residence. She opened up the door, and she immediately became violent with our deputies. She actually ended up grabbing one of the outer vests on one of my deputies and began to have a physical altercation with him. It took a couple deputies to safely get her to the ground, and they were able to eventually get her into custody with very minimal force, and they were able to successfully place her into custody. And she was charged with multiple felonies, including battery Leo on both deputies. This week, we implemented our religious institution area checks. It was Rosh Hashanah, and what we do, we do every year, especially since the war started. We make sure we have deputies go to every single one of our Jewish institutions throughout the high holidays. They were out there for the, all three days, all three nights. They made contact with every rabbi. They went to every single location. They poked their head in, said hi to the rabbi, made sure the rabbis knew they were there, and we continued that for the full three days. And again, I can say very, very happily and proudly that over the three-day holiday, we did not have a single issue of any kind on any of our religious institutions in the city. We have, like the City Manager said, we have our high-water trucks out and about. They were out here Saturday. Unfortunately, we had some flooding on Saturday. The trucks were out. We did have to help some residents. Luckily, the water rescinded pretty quickly, but they were out there Saturday. They've been out there the whole week, and obviously, they will be out there as the storm comes on Wednesday, Thursday to help any of our residents in addition to what we have here in the city. So the Commission's aware, our rescue task force, which is through our Marine Unit and Sergio's Unit on the fire side, they will be here in the city already activated if we need them. So God forbid we have extreme flooding. That element of the Sheriff's Office will be here with the boats, with the high-water trucks, with that whole rescue team already here in the city to help our residents on top of what we can do as our deputies in the city. So they'll be here for us. And last, our Dana Point, I always like to give you an update every week. This weekend, we had another large influx of juveniles coming in from south Miami. We identified a bunch of them. We trespass a lot of them. But it, it's a continued operation. This is nothing that's gonna go away. We know it's an entertainment complex, so we're gonna continue getting juveniles. But the presence of the law enforcement on the property has completely diminished any of the violence, any of the issues. So once we identify the crowds coming on that are problems, we stop them. Dana Point doesn't want them on the property, and we trespass them. But it is a different group that's coming in every weekend. It's not individuals we've trespassed already. These are new groups of individuals coming in, a lot from Miami, a lot from south. So we trespass them, and we tell them how to come back. So hopefully, the word will continue to get out. That's all I got. Anybody? Anything?
Vice Mayor?
How does that happen? Is there like, are they talking to each other and telling each other to like, come here?
It's through social media. Yeah, I mean, you know, it is, Dana Point is a huge entertainment complex, so kids talk in high school, they put it on social media, Dana Point's the place to go. The movie theater is the place to go. But we've seen a huge reduction, and I was, I know you knew from the beginning of the summer, you saw what it looked like. It's been a huge reduction, but all it takes is one social media post to tell these kids from Miami or anywhere, "Come to Dana Point Saturday night. There's a big fight gonna happen or party," and we get an influx of juveniles that show up. But we're on top of it. We, Kimco is, as the City Manager knows, after we met with them, they have absolutely put their money where their mouth is to protect that property, and we have a very good presence of law enforcement to keep that safe.
I definitely see it every, every time I'm there, so, anyway. All right, I was just wondering. It just seems like a long way for them to go, to start trouble. Anyway, but...
But luckily, you know, with the, with what we have there now with law enforcement, we've been able to keep everything peaceful, everything beautiful for our residents, and, and everything safe.
Thank you.
Chief, also, if I may add to your safety report, we had a big, a big tanker fall over on Northwest 4th Ave, and it was full of like debris from somebody demolishing a house or something. And BSO was right on it right away, and we also had a, a car go into the water at the marina. And so kudos to, kudos to BSO and kudos to Max Towing. Max Towing cleared out that trash, flipped that trailer back over right away, and they also took that car out of the, out of the water as well down by the beach, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you to you, and thank you to Max Towing.
And we'll be here, obviously, for the hurricane. Our guys will all be here, so, you know, all our residents, the rest of the shirt will be here.
Thanks, Chief. All right, up next, we have our Fire Chief, BSO Fire Chief, Sergio Pelisser. How you doing, Chief?
I'm doing very well, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Staff, and our great residents of Dana Beach. So at the beginning of hurricane season, I always talk about the different tips that our citizens should be aware of for, for hurricanes. So now with, in preparation for Hurricane Milton, I took out 10 of the most important points, and I want to make sure that everybody's out there listening, pays attention to this because this is important. This could save your life or somebody that you love's life in case we have this storm hit us. So evacuation plan. Make sure you know if you're in an evacuation zone, and make sure you know where you're going if that order is given. Make sure you have your emergency supplies. Make sure you have plenty of water, non-perishable foods, medications, especially make sure your medications are filled. Make sure that this is gonna last you three to five days. Home protection, make, you know, make sure your windows are secure and your shutters are up. Fuel. Fuel up your car. If you can do it tonight, do it tonight. If not, first thing tomorrow morning, make sure your car has fuel as we may have shortage of fuel. Power backup. Make sure you have extra batteries for your flashlights. Make sure you have batteries for your phone. If you're powered out, then you can charge your phone so you can communicate if you need to communicate with anybody or call 911. Make sure your important documents are sealed up in something that won't get wet. Make sure you take care of your pets. Make sure you have plenty of food for them. First aid and medicine. Make sure you have a first aid kit. Make sure you're ready for the flood with, we already did the sandbag distribution, so most of our citizens should be ready to go that, with that, and stay informed. You know, keep up with the TV and your weather as far as TV. And if you have to know anything about hurricanes, you could look it up on the city's website under Disaster Preparedness. And last but not least, our fire rescue personnel today, we reached out to our nursing homes to verify that they are ready and their backup plans are in place. We received confirmation from, from them that everything is ready and they're following their emergency plans. We've also reached out to the individuals on our vulnerable population list to confirm that their needs are met and make sure that they get provided any assistance necessary during this emergency. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, we're gonna be pulling item 8.3. We want to tweak it a little bit, and we're gonna be bringing it back. Finance Director, it's item 8.3.
8.3 is polled. Okay, item eight is the Consent Agenda. Any items the Commission wishes to poll except item, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I don't even see any. Are there any citizen comments out there? I didn't have any, I didn't have any reports, sorry. All right, seeing none. Thank you very much. Okay, so now we're gonna go to the Consent Agenda. Are there any items that the Commission wishes to poll from the Consent Agenda with 8.3 already being polled by the Manager? Vice Mayor?
Nothing to pull. Just was gonna make a motion.
Okay, I have a motion from the Vice Mayor.
Motion to approve with the exception of 8.3, which is being polled, or, yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you. A motion, Vice Mayor to approve Section 8.3. Commissioner Salvino, sorry, I'm trying to put your mic on. Thank you.
Second.
Second? I have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, Consent Agenda passes. Okay, we don't have any quasi judicial and public hearings, so we're gonna go right into our first readings.
Wait, 9.1.
Oh, jeez. Okay, sorry. Item 9.1 is bids impossible and request for proposals. Please, Eve.
A resolution of the City Commission authorizing the award of bid ITB 2024-021-02024 entitled Concrete Curbing Sidewalk Construction, Milling and Resurfacing of Asphalt Concrete Stripping, Striping of City Streets and Parking Lots and Lane Deliniators to FG Construction, Metro Express, The Stout Group, and Weekly Asphalt Paving and to enter into agreements for services that may exceed the annual vendor threshold amount of $50,000 for each fiscal year that the contracts are in place, providing for conflicts and an effective date, public services.
Hi there. Hi, thank you, Eve. Are there any, any questions on this item?
You want to give us just a brief report?
Sure, of course, of course. These are four companies that will be, that we were able to bid out and get response, responses for. We do need to exceed the $50,000 for each. They are going to provide us with flexibility and responsiveness for asphalt repairs, concrete repairs, including pad holes, milling and resurfacing of roadways. And this is for a three-year period with two one-year renewal options for all four.
This doesn't include speed bumps, right?
It, it, yeah, they can install them, yes.
No, it doesn't? No? Okay.
Does it include, I thought it did. Okay, sorry. Bye-bye.
Okay, no, no problem. Thank you.
Everything else except for speed bumps, I guess.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you for the description. Okay, Vice Mayor?
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from the Vice Mayor. One second. Commissioner Salvino?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay. You guys want to speak or not? I see your lights on. All right. Okay, we don't have any quasi judicial and public hearings, so now we're gonna go to first reading ordinances. Item 11.1, please, Eve.
An ordinance of the City Commission creating the Public Art Advisory Board amending Chapter 28 of the Land Development Code by amending Section 811130 entitled Public Art Advisory Board to clarify the board terms, providing for conflicts, codification, severability, and an effective date. This is a community development item.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commission. This is Eleanor Narina, Community Development Director. So this is just code cleanup. The City Attorney brought it to our attention that the terms for the Public Art Advisory Board were not identified in the city's code of ordinances. It was clearly identified in the Public Art Master Plan, and that's what we have been implementing. But just to clean it up and make sure it's codified in the code, we're recommending approval of first reading. If you have any questions, I'm here for you.
Nope, no questions. Commissioner Salvino?
Nope, you have a public hearing.
This is a public hearing. Is anyone able to speak on this item?
Make a motion, pass the...
Seeing none? All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Salvino and Vice Mayor Llewellyn.
Second.
Okay, thank you. I have a second from Vice Mayor Llewellyn. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes. Okay, Eve, item 12.1, second reading ordinances.
An ordinance of the City Commissioners of the City of Dana Beach pursuant to Section 22-7A of the city's code authorizing co-designation of a portion of Northwest 2nd Street between Northwest 4th Avenue and Northwest 14th Way to be known as Northwest 2nd Street, also Henry N. White Senior Street. After holding two public hearings and after a four-fifths vote of the entire City Commission providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date, this is a community development item.
Thank you, Eve. Again, good evening, Eleanor Narina, Community Development Director. This is second reading of the co-designation of a portion of Northwest 2nd Street and Northwest 1st, 4th Avenue and Northwest 14th Way. The White family is here if you have any questions for them, but staff is recommending approval of the second reading.
Any questions? Would you guys like to speak?
Good evening. I guess I did my name, Daphne Henry. I want to thank the Mayor, Vice Mayor, the Commissioners, City Attorney, and City Manager, the Clerk, for allowing... for um, allow us to name the street after our grandfather and their great-grandfather. So, on behalf of the White family, thank you very much. And we thank you guys from the bottom of our hearts, we finally got it done, thanks.
Well, once we have a motion and a second, we will have it done.
Okay. Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion to approve from Vice Mayor Llewellyn. I, I said public hearing, yeah. Uh, Commissioner Salvino?
Second.
I have a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed say nay? Alright, motion passes, alright. Um, yeah, you know, I, I did a little research on uh, Mr. Henry White and uh, he was actually the first baby ever born in Dania Beach. First baby ever in the, in Dania, excuse me, first baby ever born in Dania, he was born on December twenty-fifth nineteen oh four.
Christmas?
On Christmas Day nineteen oh four to a Mister and Mrs. Arthur White. And he was the oldest of four children and at an early age, he joined the Saint Ruth Missionary Baptist Church in Dania under the leadership of Reverend McCall. Uh, they, the city had a celebration, uh, from what I've heard from speaking to historians, uh, after he was born. And um, you know, this, this, this man lived in Dania his whole life and he had thirteen children. Him and Mrs. Winetta Mays White, thirteen children. And you know, the, the, this information I got from his obituaries from nineteen eighty-two and at that time, he had forty grandchildren, fourteen great-grandchildren, you know, nieces and nephews and friends. So uh, this man's family uh, probably populates like, you know, uh, ten percent of Dania. But you know, from, from what I, from what I've heard, uh, he was a sharecropper, uh, you know, this, this man saw Dania transformed from nineteen oh four all the way till his death in nineteen eighty-two. And it's wonderful to still have family members of his that still live in our city and throughout South Florida as well, well throughout the whole country, huh? And I'm sure he got relatives that live out of the country too. So um, it's a real honor and i- it's gonna be great to see uh, this street named after Mr. Henry White. And you know, we could probably put a little historical significance behind it too, um, you know, during that time. It, it, I'm sure it's gonna be a little process, take time, but I'm sure we'll have a ceremony for that as well. So, congratulations to the family, thank you for coming out today, I like your shirts, uh, I'd like one, if you could get me one. And um, so congratulations once again, Commissioner Davis, you want to say some words? Hold on, I'm sorry, it's the system. They give me this iPad and messes up everything. Okay, you're good.
Thank you Mayor, and I just wanna say a heartfelt congratulations to your family. I remember receiving an email, I don't know if it was almost a year ago or something like that, when you started this quest. And I've seen your family show up time and time again, I've seen you wear different shirts up and down Northwest First Street, canvassing before canvassing, it was just amazing, uh, the heart and the soul and the effort uh, that you put into making this happen. It was very inspirational for me to see how much uh, this meant to your family and that you had the fortitude and the perseverance to not give up and come back and show up. And that's what happens, that's when you make things happen, when you don't give up. So, kudos, congratulations, this is so well deserved. And I thank the Mayor for giving us that in-depth history about uh, your family that makes us appreciate it even more. We are Browards first city, Dania Beach, and so this is part of our history as well. And we're proud to have you in our city and proud to have that street named right here in our city. And I'd like to take a picture, can we take a picture?
Yeah.
Alright, let's do it.
Vice Mayor, some words for the picture?
No, no, no words really, I just wanna mention, they also come to the meetings, I, we see them here quite a bit.
Yes, thank you.
So, I know they're involved and they are interested and they're, you know, I, I'm impressed with that.
They're super cute.
Very nice.
They're nice.
Very nice.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Alright, that's awesome. Alright, one more round of applause for the White family, come on now. Okay. Alright, that's the stuff I like. Alright, item thirteen point two for discussion impossible action, Eve?
A resolution of the city commission authorizing the execution of an agreement with the business for the arts of Broward Inc. To commission artist, say Adams, to paint an original lead with love mural at the city marina, providing for conflicts and an effective date, community development.
Thank you, good evening again Eleanor Narina, Community Development Director. So this item was brought to you previously by Commissioner Davis, um, under discussion. This is the lead with love mural, we found a location, we've run it through the Public Art Advisory Board. Um, this is the recommended location, we've spoken also to the Parks and Rec Department and the new um, company running the marina for us. Um, they agree this is a great location, it's a big blank wall at the city of Dania Beach's beach. And um, we anticipate that this will be a great addition to our mural, our public art collection, sorry. So these are some examples of what they've done, ours will be unique to Dania and have some community engagement involvement, involvement. But this is the idea of, of what it'll look like, it'll have some type of, the word love in some way, some fashion on the wall. So these are the project details, the total cost for the mural will be ninety-four thousand seven hundred dollars. The city's contribution will be twenty thousand dollars from the Public Art Advisory Board Fund. Um, they're estimating uh, installation to be close to February of next year. And staff is recommending approval of the twenty thousand dollar contribution from the Public Art Advisory Board Fund. If you have any questions, I'm here for you.
Commissioner Davis, did you, did you ask a question?
I just have a motion, so.
Oh, okay, alright, I'll go. Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
I was just gonna say that I can actually, from my day job, my uh, office, I can see the one in Fort Lauderdale and it's very nice. So, I pass it regularly when I walk to lunch, so, anyway, I think it'll be a nice addition.
Okay.
Motion to approve thirteen point two.
Okay, I have a motion to approve thirteen point two, Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed say nay? Alright, motion approved, no, 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 motion approved, looking forward, looking forward to it. Okay, nice work. Alright, item thirteen point three, this is the Broward County Historic Preservation Board in twenty twenty-four Broward Pioneer Day, Dania Beach nominee. This is my item, uh, I, every year the county asks you to nominate a pioneer from your city and I want to nominate Kathy Kay, she's a descendant of the Frost family, our founding family. And um, you know, she lived in Dania, her husband Ted Kay is a mayor and they, they have a house here in Dania. I know they share their time between uh, the mountains and, and Dania. But a very significant family, very significant woman i- in our city. And it's an honor to be able to nominate her, so I was just looking for approval from the commission to nominate her. Vice Mayor?
I was, I, I wholeheartedly agree.
Alright, thank you Vice Mayor. Okay, so I have consensus for that. Alright, up next is our appointments, Education Advisory Board, we have one vacancy, Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
I, I have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a couple of calls out, I haven't gotten a response, I think because of the storm.
Okay.
So. But I have made the effort.
Alright, moving along, we are on Commissioner comments, and we'll start with Commissioner Joyce L. Davis.
Okay, um, a couple of items I wanted to go over is, uh, we had a wonderful time. Uh, I love our BSO, our coffee with the cop was so amazing, so thank you guys so much for coming out, we, we love you. We get to go out and uh, we went to resurrection, we switched it up from Starbucks this time and our residents came out. And so, I, I think these kind of community events where we have, we're able to socialize, you still have your uniforms on, but we're able to connect, uh, you know, our, our city officials with our BSO, with our residents and our, our volunteers, the cop volunteers that are our residents. So it's a, it's a really good uh, opportunity to, to everybody to come together over coffee and have, and have that camaraderie. So thank you guys for hosting that, it was a wonderful event, very successful. Uh, I also want to give a huge shout out, uh, you guys know that we are coming, it's very dangerous with this uh, category five approaching uh, with Milton and I really have to take uh, time to thank our top-down from our city manager, our deputy city manager and our amazing, amazing public services team. Uh, I know that if, if, and I'm sure my colleagues have been getting as many calls and as many um, requests and for not just sandbags, but stormwater drainage problems, dumpsters, everything that you can imagine um, with people trying to prepare for the storm and this team has just gone above and beyond. And um, I, I'm so proud that we had the foresight on September twenty-fifth to have that initial sandbag distribution, which was very successful and I think it helped to um, keep some of the uh, requests down that we would have now today. So I know that I heard the numbers over five thousand, they have been non-stop, all-day fielding requests after request after request. So uh, your work does not go unnoticed, it is very much appreciated, every text, every email was responded to. And that just doesn't happen in, in, in every city. And so we're very grateful to have a team that uh, is very responsive to the needs of the residents, especially in uh, times of hurricane and challenges like these. So with that, I believe that is my comments for this evening. Uh, everybody, if you didn't hear it, please go back and listen to Chief Pelisser's ten different uh, tips for staying safe. We have our tips with our alert system, we have our tips with our chief in uh, BSO. So make sure that you are signed up to the alert system, stay safe, stay dry. If you need to get out and evacuate, please do that as well and so that we can see you back the next time. Thank you so much and everybody have a great evening.
Okay, thank you Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Salvino?
Thank you Mayor, uh, a couple of items tonight, you know, talk about the flooding, we know we're gonna have flooding. I know our city staff is working very diligently. I wish we could answer and fix the problems as quickly as everybody would like to have them fixed, but I do know they're working uh, round the clock to try to alleviate as many problems that we have. Um, it's just a problem everywhere you go, whether it's Dania Beach or not, flooding is a problem when there's more water being poured than you can, than you can funnel out. We are working at it, I know we started our Southeast drainage uh, groundbreaking last week and you know, it's coming, it's just gonna take time and hopefully we'll get a little break from the weather pattern that we've had in the last couple of years and uh, try to get all this resolved. But um, just ask the residents of Dania Beach to be patient, work with us and uh, try to understand that they are working to the best of their ability with all the extra equipment we brought in. Um, coffee with the cops was great, you know, it's nice to go out there at the resurrection coffee shop and to see the, our staff of deputies and the chief and the lieutenant and the, and so on out there to represent our, our big, strong BSO team that I'm so proud of out there because they do a great job for us. And it's nice to uh, interact with them and there was a lot of people that came in there and they talked to them and it was just a nice event to have. I, I think you should have that more than, uh, you know, like every quarter, I think it's just a nice situation to have. Um, I did attend a school board meeting with uh, you know, most everybody up here and that um, I do can tell you right now that our city manager and our, our commission is working very hard to save our schools. You could see the, the looks on the people's faces when they're in there watching the possibility of my alma mater being closed down, Olson, when I was there. And it's just a shame to see that even come into play, that we cannot uh, understand Broward County School Board, why they would wanna close down a school like that, especially with all the things that we've got going on with the, the land that we've accessed from Broward County School Board to put another park out there to interact with the school. So I think we have, I think we have a good fight, I think we're gonna win and I think the schools are gonna stay open. And I'm very proud of uh, the city manager and all of our commission for the hard work they're putting in for the school, uh, the school boards, to the schools against the school board. And I think they start to understand only because they came prepared, we came prepared, but mainly the city manager who speaks up a lot about what we, what we can do and what the benefits are of staying uh, uh, open. So I wanna thank all of you up here for doing that, cuz I, I'd hate to see that closed down. Uh, with that, just everybody be safe in the storm, I know that I've got some work to do tomorrow. Um, I have a house on West Coast, everybody knows it, I have to try to go board it up tomorrow morning again for the third time. But um, you know, I believe in whatever the path is, it'll work out, it's just a material thing, it's not a life, I'm worried about that. Thank you guys, be safe tonight.
Okay, thank you Commissioner Salvino. Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
I think you're gonna make a record tonight.
Yeah, I think so too.
Um, going back to the school board, uh, yes, we attended the meeting on the thirtieth and um, I, I think it's, it's more than just uh, theory that they might agree with this, they actually made an announcement. The superintendent made, did make an announcement that was in the paper, that they would like to partner with the city of Dania Beach in order to save Olson. So I think we, we have succed, been successful so far, let's hope it, it sticks. Um, and I will say that our city manager, as she always does, was quite the cheerleader and got everybody cheering at that meeting. And it was a big crowd, so. Um, also, I, I also wanted to mention the um, award that our city manager got from uh, former Commissioner Brandon Marty and the seniors, um, also pretty much brought everybody to tears when uh, she was brought up. And it was a wonderful, wonderful day and it was very well deserved. Let's see, groundbreaking the, for the Southeast uh, drainage project. I absolutely concur with Commissioner Salvino, I wish it could be done now, um, but we know it's gonna take some time. And thankfully, this administration has gotten it done. I know everybody worked really hard to get this done, it's been going on for like ten years and it's finally starting. And so at least that's the positive, it's starting. So that down the road, once this is done, it'll definitely be a big help. Um, and even to the surrounding areas that maybe are not directly part of this particular project, it's definitely gonna help those areas. And I know there are people that are upset about it, that maybe they're not included, but it's, it's gonna make a difference for the whole area. And each of these projects that we're doing i- is helping the overall for the area. And I, with that, I also wanna make one more comment, I did send an email about this. Um, but I wanna publicly thank our team for being professionals and respectful, even when people are not towards them. Um, I've, I've been to all of these core meetings and there is always somebody in every, at almost every meeting who seems to want to bring things up that um, aren't necessarily correct or who, um, or they're just upset in general. Um, and they take it out on our staff. But everybody that attends these and, and our team as a whole, cuz I really, I don't hear complaints about how people treat the, the residents in the city. They always are very professional and very respectful and take the time and listen and try to respond accordingly and try to give answers and solutions as opposed to trying to fight back or trying to be difficult and, and um, negative. And you do see a lot of that in other cities and we just don't see it here. So we have people here that are, that work as part of our team that truly do care about the people that live here and are doing everything they can to make life better. So with that, I just wanna say thank you again to our city staff, all levels, and keep up the good work. Everybody be safe and thank you all for all of your efforts th- this week.
Thank you Vice Mayor. Uh, yes, there's a Cat Five hurricane out there, um, we've all been communicating with everyone. We, the commission has been speaking to all the residents and we've been communicating with city manager, deputy manager, who's been communicating with staff, first responders, BSO, fire and police. And like we said, all hands on deck and um, we're a resilient city. Since nineteen oh four, we were founded on resilience and we were built through resilience. And you know, we're ready for whatever comes our way, but please, we need to be prepared. And I, I actually feel that our staff is very prepared for this. Um, we've sent out additional staff, they're working overtime, we have a contracted uh, company that we use as well. They're clearing out all the storm drains ahead of time, they're monitoring, uh, you know, the hotspots in Dania that flood the most. So I know that we're ready, I know that we're ready and you know, just a message to the, to the residents out there, you know, help those who need, who need help the most, be courteous to your neighbors and you know, be calm and be patient. And uh, I always say, prepare for the worst but hope for the best. And uh, we'll get through this together, we definitely will get through this together. And uh, our book that. And our book that we were working on the last year, it came out, we got it last commission meeting, and I got to go through it from Island Syndicate. And man, I tell you what, this is a really, really cool book. It's, it's a great book to put on top of your coffee table. It, it, you know, it looks aesthetically pleasing. And you actually learn a, a whole, a whole heck of a lot about Dana Beach, where we were, where we are, and where we're going. And it's just, I'm very proud of this book. Thanks to the, the whole commission that did it, and thank you to Island Syndicate. These books are gonna be available for residents, and, you know, we'll be rolling that out soon, so, so stay posted. But it, it's something that we're, we're very proud of, and it came out very well. I know a lot of people worked very hard on it, very hard on it. Yeah, we've had a lot of events going on. The, the school situation, the, the city, that's an all-hands-on-deck situation as well. And I know everybody's been writing, calling, staying on top of it. We're led by our bulldog, Anna Garcia over here. And she will not back down. She will not back down. I wasn't at the meeting, but I, I heard her presence was felt at that meeting. And I couldn't, couldn't commend her enough for, you know, just fighting for Dana, fighting for our kids, fighting for our schools. That's what's worth fighting for. And I'll end on a good note. So yesterday, Dana Beach's own Tyler Huntley, who played for the Dana Beach, Dana Beach Bulldogs back in the day. He's a starting quarterback for the Miami Dolphins, and he got the Miami Dolphins a victory. So I just wanna give a round of applause for Tyler Huntley. This young man came back to his city on March 2nd, and we declared Tyler Huntley Day, March 2nd, 2024. He had a Tyler Huntley Fun Day at CW Thomas Park. Me and Commissioner Salvino were there. He brought other NFL superstar, Zay Flowers. He even brought Lamar Jackson at the very end. And, you know, I, I was able to talk to this young man. You were able to talk to this young man. He just had a baby. You know, he's young. He's like 25 years old, I think. But for him to come to, to the Dolphins, the Miami Dolphins, there's an actual starting quarterback for the Miami Dolphins. Like, you know, I coached Little League football, and I tell these kids that, and I said, that could be you, you guys out there. And it just, it, it, it's, it's amazing. It's amazing. And I would never thought I'd see the day that a quarterback from Dana Beach would win a game for the Dolphins against the Patriots in New England. So, yeah, we hope he sticks around. I texted him, and he texted me back. You know, this guy's busy, you know, getting ready for the next game. He's actually got a bye week, so he can relax and learn the offense a little more. But, you know, we hope, hopefully he stays around, and, you know, he, he's a prime example of somebody that gives back to his community. At such a young age, you know what I mean? He's not making $50 million a year, okay? And he still gives back, and he still pays attention, and, and he's involved. He's engaged. Sometimes he asks questions, what's going on here? So just wanted to end on that. Go Dolphins, go Tyler Huntley. And everybody be safe and be careful out there. Be, be helpful to your neighbors. Help those that need it the most. And if, and, and sign up for the Dana Beach Emergency System also, the notification system. dana beach FL.gov, or you text Dana Beach to 888-777. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. Meeting adjourned. Okay, and Oktoberfest is next week, next Saturday, so everybody knows. Oktoberfest. Oh, this Saturday, this Saturday.